Did. Check out the clock.
Are we really behind?
Really?
Oh, we are.
Hit them all.
Eight o'clock.
Oh.
Right?
We'll fix the clock.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna have breakfast.
And come back in an hour.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call the meeting. Would everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Slakka? Councilman Simmons? Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Longkart?
Here.
Okay, Audrey, we have, let's see, a variance case here, case A.
Yes, I'll read the title block into the record. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a variance request by Edward Jordan Tarver and Shay Sammons to grant relief from LDC 4-2192 to allow a five-foot setback from a roadway and utility easement as depicted on the Carolands Unrecorded Subdivision between lots 58 and 61 on land located at 26828 McLaughlin Boulevard, Benita Springs, Florida, on 21,500 more or less square feet, providing for effective date. This is the second reading. The ordinance did go to the zoning board, who did recommend approval. The case history and staff presentation will be provided by David Ortiz and Jackie Gensen's absence today.
Okay, David.
Sir, good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to present this case if I may, just to provide some preliminary information on the case itself and then show why there's a hardship, just touch base on two items that were mentioned at the zoning board and then close with any questions that you may have.
Good.
Thank you.
Carry on.
This is the Tarver Street Sideyard variance, case number VAR 1410409BOS. In summary, it's relief from LDC 42192 requiring a corner lot to maintain a 15-foot setback from a street easement or right-of-way to allow for a five-foot setback from a roadway or utility easement as depicted in the Carolands Unrecorded Subdivision between lots 58 and 61. Staff recommended approval. Zoning board recommended approval for two. Public comments and rebuttal are contained in the record. This is a quick aerial topography image. The lot, just get this pointer here, see if I can get it. This is the lot here. No question. This was taken from the Carolands Unrecorded plat and it shows, again here, this is the property and this is the 20-foot roadway easement as it's worded there. A little background on this, corner lot located in the Carolands Unrecorded Subdivision, which depicts a 20-foot roadway and utility easement along the southerly property line, which really functions as a driveway for the home to the east. The Land Development Code, Section 2192, requires a 15-foot setback from the roadway and utility easement resulting in a 35-foot setback from the southerly property line. 15-feet side yard setback is required because this is labeled as a roadway easement instead of an actual access easement or driveway, which is really how it functions. According to deed, subject property and lot 61, the previous iterations of the unrecorded subdivision, this accessway has been intended for access to lots 59 and 60, and I'll go back to the actual plat in a second. This is a sales map and this sales map actually shows that the intent of this easement was really intended as a driveway easement and it's actually labeled such right there. It actually says driveway easement. This is not a road by definition, even on our own code. It doesn't have a cul-de-sac that services multiple lots to the north. It doesn't have a hammerhead turnaround. It's really, its sole purpose is just so the property to the east, lots 59 and 60, are not landlocked, which we wouldn't permit, and to provide ingress egress to the property owner that now encompasses both lots. They were combined and has a large home here. The hardship is a result of the easement being identified as a roadway utility easement in the unrecorded subdivision document versus a driveway or access easement as you saw in the previous slide. The applicant considered vacating the subject easement and coordinating with the adjacent property owners to re-record and move the easement further to the right. However, due to mortgage obligations, they opt a request for a variance. Other homes in the area, for compatibility, we have a house that's 11,451 square feet, 2,283, 5,000 and change, 5,493. So, the applicant is proposing to build a 5,000-square-foot home that's certainly compatible with the other houses that are in the area. This is the site plan that shows the proposed structure here. When I reviewed this home, initially the applicant thought that this back here was a side property line and they thought that this was the rear. So, they actually had a seven-and-a-half-foot setback here. Unfortunately, I had to tell them that really by definition, according to our code, this is actually the rear property line, so they were required to meet a 20-foot setback. If you look at this property, it's very challenged because of this 20-foot easement. They have to meet an additional 15, so that's 35 off the property line. On the opposite side, they've got the water body here, which is a very restrictive setback, which is a 25-foot setback. So, they have this, it follows the contour this way, 25 feet. Now, they have 20 feet here and because this lot is kind of skewed, this property line here, they couldn't just move the house further to the west because then it would sort of push the house up against the front easement. They were kind of like limited to just this area. So, if we can just envision a 35-foot line coming down like this, 20 feet coming this way, 25 coming this way, seven-and-a-half this way, and of course, 25 down here, which really wouldn't matter. They're just limited to where they can build footprint-wise and it's just right here. And that's what they're trying to do. They're kind of skewing the house a little bit to maximize the water view of the beautiful bodies of water that we have here in Benita. This is the depiction of the elevation of the home. It's certainly a very nice house. Findings and conclusion were that there are exceptional or ordinary conditions or circumstances inherent to the subject property as a result of the existing conditions of the property. The exceptional or extraordinary conditions or circumstances are not a result or actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance. Any action taken by an applicant pursuant to lawfully adopted regulations preceding the adoption of the code in which this chapter is derived will not be considered self-created. The findings and conclusions are the variance is granted, this the minimum variance, that will relieve the applicant of an unreasonable burden caused by the application of the regulation in question to the subject property. The granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. The condition or situation for the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not a general or recurrent nature as to make it more reasonable and practical to amend the ordinance. And if I can just go back to this one slide. This property here to the south, when we measure a lot that was created prior to January 28, 1983, it's measured at the midpoint. This property is actually a little bit wider in width than this property is. This property would only be required to meet a 15-foot setback where these folks are being required to meet almost a 40-foot setback, 35 feet. So, it's really taken a lot away for something that was just mislabeled over time as documents exchanged hands and surveyors, they went, descriptions and so forth changed. That one word, road or street, has created a 35-foot setback when the, and I'll use this word that Jackie used at the zoning board, the functionality of this road is strictly just a long driveway. That's the only thing that this is being used for. This is not a street right-of-way. It hasn't been recognized by council as such. It hasn't been dedicated for public access. It's just a driveway. And then just to touch on two points that were mentioned at the zoning board. One, it was suggested that possibly the applicant is building too big of a house in this area. The zoning code for conventional, excuse me, conventional zone properties in the RS1 district allows that the property owner can actually cover up to 40% of the property. Although this property is quite restrictive in terms of width, it's quite generous with regard to depth. So, this applicant, if they exercise their 40% right to build that footprint, they could really build a house that would be 18,000 square feet of living area and I would have no problem signing off on that because they would be well within the code. Their house is only 5,000 square feet, so it's less than a third of what they could build. They would build, they would build a long, narrow house, but they're at 5,000 square feet. The other thing that was mentioned was that granting the variance to allow the applicant to be five feet may inhibit the, this property owner from going in and out of the property safely. If we look at the survey, the gravel driveway really isn't, doesn't span the whole 20 feet of that easement. It might be maybe 10, 15 feet. So, really from the edge of that driveway to where they're proposing is about 10, 11 feet to the edge of the driveway. This morning, I actually went out and I, and I actually, I have a Dodge truck and I actually laid across my truck. I'm only five foot six, so I'm quite short. And I can't stretch out completely across to my truck. So, I said, well, my truck, I'm gonna measure it in the pumper and measure just under five feet. So, I'm gonna take my car and I'm gonna measure five feet. I could put three of my vehicles here on this, space them two feet apart, and you still have six feet before you reach the applicant's home. So, I don't think that there's gonna be any interference at all with ingress egress to the property to the east. One could argue that if this was curved or if it was at a 90-degree angle, there may be a visibility issue, but there really isn't. I mean, if you pull up to this property down here, you get a clear sight view of the gate that's up here in the call box and really interfering with ingress egress would not be an issue at all. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, before we go to the applicant, is there any questions for Dave? No? Thank you very much, nice job.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pritt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. May I address you from here or should I stand up here? It's up to you.
Either one. All right.
My name is Robert Pritt. I'm with Retschel and Andrews Law Firm in the Naples office. And I'm here on behalf of Dr. Tarver and Dr. Sammons, who would like to, Dr. Sammons would like to come back home to Benita Springs. She can tell you a little bit about that if you'd like to hear from her. And they bought this property in 2009 with the hopes of building a house on that property, a single-family residence on that property, being able to take advantage of that little notch. It looks like the reverse of the state of Indiana, I think, just that little notch on the water on Estera Bay and they purchased lot 58. Your staff have, both here and at the first hearing, in my opinion, did an excellent job of indicating what the issues are, what the problems are, et cetera, in the proposed resolution of it. The, and what happened is when the house was being designed, it was believed that the, that this is a, what it really functions as, and that is a driveway easement. It's a, oh, I was hoping to get that back on. Is there any way of killing that back up? Right, I think that helps. And as your staff member said, the burden of the easement, for whatever reason, was put onto lot 58 rather than the entire parcels, which were, the parcel was 58 and then 59 in the back, 60 in the back, and then 61 over there on the right-hand side. You can't quite see the whole number there, right there, thank you. And 59 and 60 have been developed as one parcel. There is a house there, it's a very large house out there on the point. And 61, of course, is really not part of this, but just for clarification, we want to show that, or it is shown. So, 58, it's really 58 and then 59 and 60 that are involved here. So, when the design, the designer, Mr. Guzman, who's here, did the design, they very carefully placed this proposed house where it ought to be. So, it doesn't look like a, I call them tractor-trailer lots from my old days when I used to drive trucks. But you would have, in order to make a house that would absolutely fit on that, it would have to be either very, very small or it would have to be very long, like putting two tractor-trailer trailers together. And that's just not good design, especially to take advantage of the way that the, the way that the bay there comes in and it just makes sense to do it that way. And Mr. Guzman can testify if you wish to have him do that. He did testify at the hearing, at the zoning board hearing. Once upon a time, all four of those lots were under common ownership and that was sold off one by one in the past. The original sales map, oh, thank you. How did you know I was gonna say that next? It's hard to read there, but it says driveway easement and that was the original map done by Johnson Engineering way back in 1960. How it's somehow morphed into a roadway easement, none of us know. We were not able to find out, but it was originally a driveway easement. Frankly, we couldn't blame the staff's trepidation about them saying, well, that it functions as a driveway easement, it walks like a driveway easement, talks like a driveway easement. It is a driveway easement. They didn't feel that they could say that because that is, you know, that might be something for the city council to ultimately be able to state, but you can. And so, we did not argue with that too much. We, we said, they suggested that we ask for a variance and we went and asked for a variance. Dr. Sammons said, well, if that's what it takes, then let's go do it. And so, that's why we're here today, even though the original map indicated that it was a driveway easement. Again, functionality, I think your staff is, both in its report and its original testimony and its testimony here today, have come to the same conclusion as we do and that is, it is not a public road. I don't think there's any question, it's not a public road. It was never dedicated. There's no evidence that either you or the county ever accepted that as a public road. So, it certainly is not a public road. If anything, it would be a private road, but if you look at it, there are no orange signs there that indicate that that's at the corner of McLaughlin Boulevard and whatever you want to call it. So, there's nothing there to indicate that where the public would, or even visitors would have access. It's just on paper as a roadway. It's not functioning as a private road either. It's functioning as a driveway. You can go nowhere except to lots 59 and 60, which is owned by the neighbor. There's no name for the road. The address, by the way, of 59 and 60 is McLaughlin Boulevard. It's a McLaughlin Boulevard address, so even the lot out there on the promontory is a McLaughlin Boulevard address. So, the whole idea is to have a reasonable design, taking into account the unique situation on this particular lot and to put a reasonable-sized home that's in keeping with the neighborhood and allow them to come back to Benita Springs and live there. This would be their primary residence and Dr. Sammons can tell you more about that. The, each and every requirement is set forth in your packet and if ever there was one, these are exceptional, extraordinary conditions inherent to the property as a result of existing conditions on the property going clear back to 1960. And hardship results from the easement being depicted as a roadway or utility easement versus an access easement, which is really what it is. The exceptional, extraordinary conditions or circumstances are not the result of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance. This was, again, done way back in the 60s. The variance is granted is the minimum variance that will relieve the applicant of an unreasonable burden caused by the application of the regulation in question to the subject property. And your staff in your report and your draft ordinance has conditioned the approval so that the applicant will still be required to meet all the other development standards in that district, the RS1 district. The granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Oh, my goodness, this is going to be nice for the, a nice addition to the neighborhood and it's going to be in keeping with the size of other houses. As a matter of fact, on that chart there, this would have been the next to the, between the, next to the last of the last, the smallest home that was in the area there. So, it's right in keeping with the neighborhood. And the condition or situation of a specific piece of property or the intended use for which the variance is sought is not of a general or recurrent nature so as to make it more reasonable and practical to amend the ordinance. I don't think you have to amend any ordinance just to make this decision today on this particular property. And our request would be therefore that you grant the relief that's requested. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions or turn it over to Dr. Sammons if she'd like to make a brief statement.
All right, council, you have any questions? No? Good. All right, go ahead, carry on. And if you want to go ahead and pull that microphone down a little bit, that's good.
Good morning. My name is Shay and basically, a little bit about me, my family moved here in the 1980s and I grew up here and this is where I consider home, even though we currently reside in Lakeland. I went to Estera High School, Benita Springs Elementary and Spring Creek, or Benita Springs Middle School and Spring Creek Elementary. I lifeguarded at the Benita Springs Community Pool over here and taught swimming lessons for years. But basically, we've always, my husband and I have wanted and planned to come back here to start a family and that's why we purchased this lot in 2009. And in good faith, we hired our designer and we went ahead and drew up plans specifically for this property. And basically, because the plots have been unrecorded and the verbiage roadway versus driveway came up and we didn't get the permit, the city had a, you know, a remedy, a simple remedy, which is go to your neighbor and you guys can work out a legal agreement, but they would not agree to that. That would simply change it from a roadway to a shared access easement. So, that's why I'm here today. And we're, you've heard already, we're proposing to build a home that's consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. If we are allowed and the variance is granted, you know, the driveway to the other home is not gonna be affected in any way. It's not gonna be altered, obstructed. Basically, that's it. We just, my husband and I appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Rich Guzman is here, prepared to answer any questions you may have. I don't think we'll have him do a presentation, but if you have any questions concerning the design and layout, we'll be glad to have him available to answer.
I think it's pretty clear, but up to now. At this point, council, if you, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and ask, we have one party of record. I'm gonna ask, open up the comment now. And our party record is Mr. Skakis and Loretta, are you here? No? No? Okay, so there are parties of record, there are no, there are no other parties of record or interested parties. And at this time, council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
They have motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. I have to tell you right now that I am sufficiently, well, let's see, questionably conflicted in this regard. I do a lot of work in neighborhood and for that matter, I have proposals out, speculative proposals out for Mr. Skakis, who's the neighboring person. And I believe I have a maintenance contract with the, a couple of the docs around in the area, so I'm going to abstain and fill out the proper form. But with that notification, I'll let you know that I think what the zoning board recommended and what staff's recommended is completely, it's just the way it should be. It's obviously a driveway. Anyway, go ahead.
I'd also like to make record that I did have ex parte communication with the applicant's attorney. Thank you.
Yeah, any other ex parte communications?
Yes, as well.
Yep, and be sure everyone filed one out. I had one as well with Mr. Pritt there, a brief conversation. And so, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for the applicant?
No, just one last point of discussion. I went out and looked, it's not a paper street, just for the record. It's not a paper street. It's, it's not, belongs, doesn't belong to the city. The only question I had was on public safety, fire trucks in and out, not a problem, right?
No problem.
All the questions.
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Whoops, I'm staying.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you want a couple of minutes to go ahead and switch up?
Okay. I'll read the title block of the next case and this is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida.
Wait a minute, hold on one second. Dave, good job.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
David.
I know.
What did I call him, Dave?
Jay. Did you just call him Jay?
I called him Dave.
Thank you very much.
Okay, hey, thank you.
Don't be absent, Jackie.
It's a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by the city of Benita Springs to be sent.
Oh, them?
Yeah, them.
Whatever.
Yeah, no, I think you all know the applicant. To be sent 3.93 more or less acres from two-family conservation and commercial, which is TFC 2 and C1A districts, to the environmental critical EC district on land located at 27860 and 27880 Matheson Avenue, Benita Springs, Florida 34135, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. I believe John Dolmire will present the case.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, Mrs. Gensen is out. You get the JV team. I apologize.
Wow.
You are the applicant, so you obviously have the ability to turn yourself down and while this presentation is being loaded.
Do we have to all recuse ourselves?
That's a good question. Just when Audrey walked away.
The answer is no.
Just to provide a little background, we're loading the presentation. This property was purchased by Lee County as part of the 2020 program. And as part of that agreement that we had with them to purchase this property, we stated that we would rezone this so that there could not be development that would take place there. And the county was extremely worried about that. They would not take our word for it. They wanted us to rezone it so that there would not be development permitted. And as a result, we are proposing the environmental critical district. Here's some of the background of the property, just under four acres. It has TFC and commercial zoning now. The most restrictive zoning district we have is the environmental critical, which is what we are proposing. Zoning board has agreed with our recommendation for approval. And here's a little bit of what I had previously told you. What we're looking to do is make sure that what was purchased stays in its current state minus the exotic vegetation and it stays that way into the future. Here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, to the south is Benita Beach Road. Oak Creek runs to the middle of the property. That looks like what we are providing. So, I don't know if you have any questions, Mr. Mayor. This is one of those situations where the county is asking us to make a change, which would change the zoning, but how the site operates today compared to how it would operate if this zoning is approved is no different. So, really, we're looking at what is more of a protectionist-type zoning as opposed to something that would allow any type of development to the future.
Okay, good.
It's consistent with a comprehensive plan and we recommend approval.
Any questions, council? No? Yeah, go ahead.
Will this restrict us from doing any types of improvements like a kayak launch or pathways in there for people to walk on?
Yes. If we're looking at providing any sort of improvements on there, it would have to be consistent with the environmentally critical district, which is quite limiting. So, you would not see this as, some of your other parks where there are a lot of activities and trails, this would be almost preserved entirely as a natural park.
Can I add something? Yeah, I would like to add something. I'm sorry. Kayaking and hiking is allowed, but the infrastructure to set up facilities for this is not. Just wanted to clarify that.
Well, in that regard, let's say for instance, someone would actually want to go to this place and we wanted to make a place for them to be able to, I don't know, park? Is that saying that we can't make any kind of improvements at all to where the public can actually visit the place or is this gonna be a test tube park?
That type of infrastructure, you probably want to have additional property. As Mr. Kirby said, you can go walk around that site, but in terms of having infrastructure in place where you're building bridges or building decks, that's really where you start. in place where you're building bridges or building decks, that's really where you start drawing the line.
So, in fact, this, is this a requirement? I mean, this is something, we don't have any choice in a matter. Could we decide to make it a different kind of park, or no? This has to be, it was bought with 2020 money, so there are specific things that we have to do.
Under the current agreement, this is what you are required to do. If you want to provide additional infrastructure, or are there other things you would like to do on this site, they would have to be done through an agreement with the county, and then we'd come back in, if they were not consistent with a zoning district, to modify it, to approve it. So, you would not simply have an idea that we can pick up the phone, call Nicole Perino, and say, "We would like to have elevated boardwalks out there and some parking," and it could happen tomorrow. That would have to go through discussion with Lee County, and once it was agreed upon, we would rezone the property.
But we would have to rezone the property to do that.
Yes, sir. You'd, at that point, you'd be looking more at a planned development, because it would be a little more specific, but we're really getting ahead of ourselves. It would require additional approval, though, just so this council knows.
But for, for council's consideration right now, we really don't have any choice in a matter right now, because it's part of the agreement we have?
No, sir. You are pretty locked into this.
Okay. Just want to know. Good question, Mike. The other question is, this is a doozy, and, and everyone, not that it's going to happen, but there has been some discussion for in the future, somewhere in the future, that, that Matheson Street might be extended to Benita Beach Road. Not, again, not saying it will. There's been some discussion in that regard. If we go to do that, well, then that would have to go back to the county again, just, just like any other type of thing, or?
No, sir. If you actually, let me grab the mic.
Audrey, go ahead.
Actually, from a legal standpoint, roads, you would still have to prepare like an environmental engineering report and permitting report, but roads, you can pretty much go through, you don't look at what the zoning or comp plan designation is.
And also, Mr. Mayor, if you look here, this is the right-of-way for Matheson, which is just to the east of the property line, so you would not be...
So, it is to the east of the property line?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, well, never mind. All right, thank you. Any, any other questions, counsel? You got anything? All right, is, what's your pleasure, counsel?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, okay, public hearing. Well, if there's public hearing, let's see, we had, we have no parties of record here. We have an interested party.
Yes, and the interesting, interested party, they did read his letter at the zoning hearing. He is present today, Mr. Colak.
Okay. Mr. Colak, would you like to come up forward? We'll go ahead.
Hope I pronounced his name not terribly.
Hi, my name's Frank Jack Colak, and I live on Herald Street on Oak Creek. My concerns are trespassers, and we've, I've also had to call the fire department on kids lighting the woods on fire since you guys have opened it to the public. I've also had a group of men go out in Matheson Street and hit golf balls towards my house, which are still laying in the back of the house, thinking this was a driving range. I've had arguments with families that have come onto my property and decided they were going to have a, you know, have a play day on the property and play fetch with their dog in Oak Creek on my property and get confrontational with me. You have no fence, you have no perimeter. I've lived here for 14 years. That was my little piece of heaven in the woods. I'm all for not having anything built behind me. That's great, but all of a sudden, now my security, my privacy has been compromised because there's a park behind me, and even though I have no trespassing signs, you have boundary signs up there, they don't care, they come right through. They argue with me that it's part of the park, and it's not, it's part of my property. So, there's nothing set to stop these people from just coming onto my property all the time. So, I have concerns about this becoming a public park.
All right, well, good. And I think that the best thing for us to do, not to start a dialogue here, is that we'll, we'll work with staff to go ahead and secure the piece of property so that, that your, your peace and quiet isn't interrupted there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. John?
John Gaciato, for the record. Just wanted to make sure that Frank had an opportunity to address you, since he did send the letter in.
Sure.
We had first heard about those complaints right before the last hearing, immediately sent some folks out to take a look at the situation, have been working with the property owner. So, it's our hope, actually, that going ahead with this and formalizing the use of that property as a passive park will actually help his situation, because we'll be able to delineate it better and, and obviously maintain and control it better. I don't know that a fence is, is the proper solution, but we'll be working through options with the property owner and take necessary action.
Yeah, at least some proper signage and whatnot would be nice, what you can do,